There will be two amendments to the agenda tonight. Item 8F, we have added comparative analysis of certificate salaries and benefits as an attachment. Copies are provided in the public comment section in the back of the auditorium. Item 12Y, the total amount of gifts and donations is $13,431.93. Everyone good on those two? All right, can I get an approval of the agenda with the amendments?
We approve the agenda as amended.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Today, we are presenting about John Reed PBIS.
PBIS at John Reed is aligned with LCAP Goal 3, create and maintain optimum learning and working environments for students and staff. We do this by providing behavior expectations for all areas of our school.
At John Reed, we have behavior matrix for everyone on our campus. This way, we know how to be safe, kind, responsible, and ready to learn.
Here is an example of our classroom expectations. I know what I need to do in all areas for the adults. This way, for them to teach us in evidence-based ways to make sure we have important behavior and academic success outcomes for all of us.
PBIS teaches us how to be kind, safe, responsible, and ready to learn when we are in our classrooms and around school.
We earn leopard spots when we show that we have been safe, kind, responsible, or ready to learn. Sometimes, we even have random leopard spot drawings and we can earn that opportunity to get books from our amazing book vending machine.
At John Reed, we honor students with weekly positive officer roles. It's so exciting. On Monday mornings, we gather as a whole school community and we celebrate our classmates who have shown how to be kind, safe, responsible, and ready to learn. We will continue to work on making John Reed a great place to learn.
Thank you for hearing about PBIS at John Reed. It has been our honor to represent our school. Thank you to the board. Do you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? All right, did you guys get the little award for coming tonight? Because if not, I think you might need to go to the office and get one tomorrow. I think they all should deserve a little award. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you to our students and their families for representing John Reed today. Thank you, board.
Thank you. All right. All right, next we have Rachel Allen coming up to talk about our co-top program at Thomas Page Academy.
Hello. Good evening, board and community. It is my honor to acknowledge two wonderful teachers, Ms. Defonte and Ms. Bluebird, two amazing transitional kindergarten teachers at Thomas Page Academy for their hard work and dedication. They have created an inclusive classroom.
Alright, alright, next we have Rachel Allen coming up to talk about our co-taught program at Thomas Page Academy.
Hello, good evening, board and community. It is my honor to acknowledge two wonderful teachers, Ms. Defonte and Ms. Bluebird, two amazing transitional kindergarten teachers at Thomas Page Academy for their hard work, can you hear me, and dedication. They have created an inclusive classroom environment that supports the growth of all students. They were our first full-day bell-to-bell co-taught inclusive transitional kindergarten class with one special education teacher and one general education teacher. They have been models for co-planning, co-assessing, and co-teaching. All the students in that room are all of their students. This year, we have grown this model to two more classrooms, a second classroom at Thomas Page and one at University La Fiesta. And I want to thank you both for leading the way and all of your work. They have won a Spirit of Education Award that is being presented to them at the Superintendent's Council and the Special Education Advisory Committee through the county office as well.
Alright, and then we have a certificate of recognition for both of you as well from the district. Let me turn this off. Superintendent E. Turi and I got to go last week and I had snacks shared with me and we got hugs and it was the sweetest, most rewarding time in the classroom. So it was wonderful. Thank you for all you do. It was lovely. Yes, thank you. Alright. Alright, next up is our student board member reports for Technology High School, Naomi Hernandez.
Good afternoon and thank you for having me. As I stand here tonight, I am honored to be able to continue for a second year sharing that amazing events that Technology High School has and will continue to plan all year long. This year was the third year we were able to host Summer Bridge. It has been a tradition that has allowed us to welcome incoming students to their new home for the next four years. It gives them that opportunity to make friends, introduce them to staff members, and allows them to feel more prepared on their first day of school. It is an event led by student leaders and in this year was advised by Ms. Wolfman and Ms. Juarez. This year was different from previous years because we had leaders from drama, band, ASB, yearbook, and journalism. Our goal for this year is to be more inclusive. It allowed incoming students to learn more about what Technology High School has to offer and have current students as role models in subjects or activities of interest for them to be able to ask questions. Our leaders had to attend training days for four days from August 2nd to 4th. In those four days, they learned leadership activities that would later be taught to incoming students for three days on August 8th to 10th. They were separated into groups and had about three students as leaders. On the last day, there was a great race that allowed the groups to compete against each other in fun activities. Later on in the day, there were ASB elections for freshmen interested in becoming freshman representatives. Each student who was interested in joining ASB gave a speech in front of their student body to convince them to vote for them. Each speech was incredible and was amazing to see incoming leadership students. It was a day where many smiles were shared. It is one of the events that creates memories and friendships that last throughout high school. Over the summer, Ms. Mason hosted coding classes for fourteen middle school girls from Petaluma and Runer Park who were interested in learning more about coding. Ivy, Stephanie, and Ashlyn, Tech High students taking advanced placement in computer science, were there to teach and assist a new generation of girls. Their purpose was to inspire more women in STEM and eventually inspire them to come to our school as it focuses on STEM that will allow them to continuing furthering their education. As of ASB, clubs rush was a huge success as always. Every grade level was interacting with each other, students learning about new clubs or continued clubs based on their interests. We were excited to see the clubs begin to have their meetings. It was incredible being able to see our campus filled with students interested in the clubs Tech High has to offer them. Soon after that was our first big event, our back-to-school mixer. It was nice seeing everyone having fun. It was more than a dance. It was a place where we made sure that there was comfort along with inclusion. There was music, games, a food truck, and a volleyball tournament and a movie playing. It was a little bit of everything and I hope everyone enjoyed it as much as ASB enjoyed planning it. This Friday is our very first Spirit Day. Our theme is blue and white, which are our school colors. It is also our first time having a lunch rally for the student body to enjoy where there will be very exciting activities where staff and students will be participating. I can't wait to share more about this. Our first blood drive of the year is happening on October 3rd. This year, we have decided to go with the theme of vampires because it is taking place during Halloween month. We are hoping that we will encourage more people to donate blood. Another way we are encouraged, the student bodies, by having a raffle for the students who participate and they are able to win different prizes and enjoy a pizza party. We look forward to sharing more on the outcome as well as continuing to have more blood drives in the future. Talking about outreach events, as you know, Technology High School is a school of choice. So next month, we will be focusing on visiting local middle schools with our counselor, Ms. Juarez, to share information about Tech High and inspire people to apply. Last week, a college and career fair took place during lunch and all grades were encouraged to go and look at colleges they might be interested in. One representative was sent from each college where students got to ask them any questions they might have. Talking about colleges, our counselor will be hosting a guidance night where students and parents can go to be informed about the requirements of graduating, financial aid along with other important information. Guidance night is for all grade levels, sharing information about six-year plans, college applications, and THA services. One will be taking place tomorrow afternoon and a second one will happen next Wednesday. Tech High Fall sports are off to a strong start with volleyball, girls and boys soccer, and cross-country already happening. We look forward to sharing on our student athletes as always. Also, with this new year, we would like to formally introduce Ms. Wolfman as our ASB advisor and Mr. Aftav as Tech High Assistant Principal. They are both doing a fantastic job and we remain optimistic about this year. Our newest titans have expressed their excitement in their first year in high school. They are all loving the school and are looking forward to their classes. As of sophomores and juniors, they are continuing their routine and are enjoying their time at school. For our seniors, they have began the process of college applications. We understand it can be overwhelming for our seniors, which is why our senior representatives organized a senior picnic last Friday where each senior enjoyed a slice of pizza and a beverage. All seniors enjoyed it and it is only the beginning of the many senior activities to come, not only for seniors, but there are many other student events for the upcoming year that I'm excited to share in the future. I look forward to sharing next month's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. For Rancho Cerrado High School, we have Samantha Petrie.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Petrie and I'm this year's school board representative for Rancho Cerrado High School. Thank you for having me here. To start the year, we welcomed our student body with a tunnel to walk through for the first day back on campus. During the summer, there are many groups and teachers on campus to plan for the upcoming school year. Our ASB class had a leadership training at UC Santa Cruz called Core Camp. We learned many new ideas and plans to bring back and incorporate to Rancho. We also had meetings and training August 1st through the 3rd. Rancho hosted orientation for freshmen and all incoming students. ASB and leadership students were able to lead the tours and show our new students around campus. As school board representative, I create gifts for all staff members, which included an apple, no, and a cookie. These gifts were to welcome back our staff and wish them a great start to the new school year. Class representatives made pause for each student with their names to be hung up at the entrance of the school and quad. Seniors had seniors sunrise on August 18th at our football field. The senior class provided donuts and hot chocolate to grab and eat. On August 29th, we had a very successful clubs rush in our quad with many people signing up for sixteen clubs. We also had a booth for our freshman class council election and open seats for the junior class council during clubs rush where students could come up and ask questions. We had our very first Spirit Week of the year on August 28th to September 1st. Monday was rhyme without reason. You dress up with a friend or a group with something that rhymes like Wild West and Princess. Tuesday was tropical day, wear any beach wear. We also collected money for Maui wildfire relief. Wednesday was anything but a backpack. Thursday was superheroes versus villains. Friday was colored by class. Freshmen wore green, sophomores wore pink, juniors wore blue, and seniors wore red. At the end of the week, we produced the first rally. Our welcome back rally was superhero themed with many different props and decorations around the gym. During the rally, we reflected our student core principles by supporting this success and sparking the spirit. There were cheer, dance, band, and choir performances. We introduced club presidents, fall captains, class councils, and our ASB class. We also had a shadow boxing game that produced a lot of class spirit and positive chanting. We had our first blood drive of the year last Thursday, September 7th. We were able to save nineteen lives. Rancho Girls' Flag Football had their very first game last Wednesday against San Marin and they were one. This week, we're hosting a scholastic book fair. During the week, teachers have signed up to bring their class in to buy books, posters, and other small gadgets. Students and other staff are able to drop by during lunch as well to check out the book fair. Upcoming 1995, Rancho Lumina Nicole Mann will be visiting our campus to talk to our students about her experiences on the 21st of September. She was the first Native American woman in space. Will also be attending a Making Connections leadership training with other local Sonoma County Schools at Santa Rosa High School, sponsored by Jostens. And September 23rd is our community celebration for our mural in the quad. There'll be dances, food, and community booths. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Samantha. Trustee Reports on Activities, Trustee Johnson.
Thank you. Last month in August, I went to the Two by Two meeting and it was led by Runer Park Mayor Samantha Rodriguez and it was a good meeting. We were emphasizing the need for recruiting teachers, especially in the university. We don't have a lot of them coming in for certification.
Great, thank you. Trustee Martin?
Thank you. Yes, I was able to go to the Technology High School back-to-school night and I've been to a couple of volleyball games with Tech High.
Very cool. Trustee Brown? Trustee Nelson?
We have an upcoming DLAC committee tomorrow night is Rancho Cerrado back-to-school night. I'll be there and then I was able to go to a Rancho Petaluma football game at the JC.
Nice, cool. I have been spending time with Superintendent E. Turi, so I think most of you know, last Tuesday, we've successfully visited all twelve schools between 8:30 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. and it resulted in thirteen thousand steps. We got caught tailgating in UWELOF's parking lot. There was no booze involved. It was just wheat thins and carrots and some hummus because we realized I made a wonderful schedule for the day that did not include lunch at all. So, but we did it and thank you to everybody. It was kind of a last minute. I told the principals a couple of days in advance, by the way. I called it back-to-school night for Superintendent E. Turi because it was like we had seven point three minutes at each school with four point six minutes in between to drive. So thank you, everyone, for your hospitality and teachers. We kind of just peeked in the classroom really quick and didn't have time to fully engage, but it was wonderful, the things that we were seeing. And I know Superintendent E. Turi has longer, more interactive visits planned over the next couple of weeks. So we did that and I did go to Tech back-to-school night, but I know you never take off your board hat, but I had my mom hat on that night and I tried, so. And then we have lots of upcoming committee meetings and things going on. So it's definitely, the school year is off to a start and we're going, so, yeah. Superintendent E. Turi?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I just want to thank everyone for the warm welcome. Thank you to the board, President Wing, all the educators in the community. It's been a fast-paced seven days and I've enjoyed every minute of it, so thank you all. As President Wing mentioned, we were able to get to all the school sites, which was a lot of fun. She did have it planned very, very well. We made it everywhere. In addition to that, we've had, I've had several one-on-one meetings with staff. I'm just trying to get to know folks in the community. I've met with Lisa Baumann, John Bartolome, Jamal Fields, Jen Hansen, Molly Kohler, Rob Valdevia, and I was able to meet with Josh Brown and John Gek. And I'm able to get to a couple of the schools. I was at Tech Middle yesterday and Lawrence Jones today. I'm going in at lunch and able to sit down and just get to know folks a little bit better. I hope to make it to all the schools by the end of the month and then I'll start over. So just wanting to be visible and as transparent as possible and approachable. So in addition to that, we've had some incident command training. We've had some presentations from the Child Parent Institute, met with the Ed Foundation and I want to thank the Ed Foundation for all their hard work of, you know, tirelessly working for the schools and all their work is volunteer, so I just want to acknowledge that and call that out. And I also wanted to acknowledge Richard Crane Elementary and University Elementary at La Fiesta for their Gold Implementation Award of PBIS and thank you to John Reed for their PBIS presentation tonight. So thank you all. I'm excited to be here and look forward to getting to know even more people and hearing more stories and how we can all work together. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Next we have the Runer Park Cerrado Educators Association report and I believe there's Lisa.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, trustee President Wing and trustees Brown and Nelson and Martin and Johnson and Superintendent E. Turi. Good evening. My name is Lisa Baumann. I am this year's Runer Park Cerrado Educators Association President. I am proud to teach biology and environmental science at Rancho Cerrado High School. This is my eleventh year teaching in the district, my twenty-fourth year as an educator in the classroom. It's an honor to work in this community with our students, families, and fellow educators. I apologize for not being able to make it to the last meeting and kind of bowing out at the last minute, but you may have heard that we were moving our son off to college at San Diego State and I think I was a little overly ambitious about being able to make it to that meeting. And for those of you, I know some of you have already sent your kids off to college and some of you will be or sending them off somewhere and it's really pretty bittersweet. You know, you're excited because they've accomplished something, but you're also sad because they're not in the house anymore. And, but I can say with confidence, and he was a Rancho graduate, that, you know, he had great teachers along the way and great teachers from this district that have prepared him to do just what he's doing and to be successful at it. So bravo, all of us. It's hard to believe that it's been almost a month since the district kickoff already. All but two sites, Rancho and El Camino have had their back-to-school nights and ours is tomorrow. And Richard Crane is going to have their fall break at the end of the month. It's crazy how time flies. In the past two weeks, I have been able to visit John Reed and Richard Crane, Thomas Page, and today I popped in at HAN, so I'm doing the same tour circuit that the superintendent is doing. And I'll be visiting Evergreen tomorrow and Lawrence Jones on Friday and also plan to hopefully hit everybody by the end of the month. And it's been amazing just connecting with all of our educators, our amazing educators. And it's obvious going to the sites, how passionate and how dedicated they are to their students and families. I wanted to just share a couple of highlights that haven't come up yet. So at Marguerite HAN, first grade started their first week of Walk to Read. They worked together with their principal, Rachel Hankerson, and retired first grade teacher Diana Smith to come up with groups that will meet three times a week. They are starting out by focusing on different phonics skills and after three weeks will come together to reassess student learning and plan new groups. And on Friday, September 8th, the HAN fourth grade team celebrated California's birthday, which was September 9th. Students prepared a short presentation on something important to California. Austin Brooks, who's in our audience, brought his banjo and baked a bunch of cookies and they learned the state song, "I Love You California," and those cookies were shaped like the state of California, by the way, with chocolate chips, where Sacramento belongs. And they sang "Happy Birthday" to the state as a grade level. At John Reed Elementary, they've also started Walk to Read four days a week for grades one, three, and four and started Girls on the Run today for third through fifth grade girls. And Expeditionary Learning, man, they do not waste any time. They've already taken two expeditions so far this year, one to see the Tudor's exhibit at the Legion of Honor and last week, a three-day expedition based out of Samuel P. Taylor State Park. Four classes of a seventh and eighth graders visited, and I'm never, I'm not going to say this correctly, Akadina Dairy in Petaluma. correctly, Acadina Dairy in Petaluma, Gospel Flat Organic Farm in Bolinas, and Keith Hansen's Wildlife Art Studio and Gallery. I want to go back to middle school and be an XL. They also hiked on the Hollow Marin, Muddy Hollow, Bear Valley, and Pioneer Trails and observed two le elk at Tamalis Point and three species of bats under the bridge in Olima. Additionally, XL teachers were surprised last night after a meeting with recognition certificates from Ronert Park Mayor Samantha Rodriguez, an XL alum, Sonoma County Supervisor Chris Corsi, California State Senator Bill Dodd, and U.S. Representative Mike Thompson. Families and alumni from the past twenty-nine years came to share in the event, as well as President Wing and Superintendent E. Turey. And then there's one more that I almost forgot, that I really wanted to make sure that you know about. On Saturday, September 23rd, Rancho Catati High School will host the Celebración de la Comunidad en Rancho, and would be delighted to have you join. It's going to be a carnival-style event to inaugurate our mural that is in the quad here. It's pretty exciting, and there's lots of important people that are going to be there, too. They, let's see, Congressman, City Council, Mexican consulate. Yeah, it's really, it's really going to be a great event, and I will be there, and I hope to see some of you there, too. So, now that I've shared all that, I just want to kind of start off the year with some hopes of ours. As educators, we know that the education system is complex, it's always changing, and can be taxing at times for all of us. Educators also know that having strong relationships with each other and with our administration is important. I'm happy to report that since the beginning of the year, members and both our executive and bargaining teams have had great and productive meetings with district leadership. Our first meet and confer with HR Director Jen Hansen and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Fields was positive, candid, and a great start to our monthly dialogue. Another positive and productive meeting occurred during our first bargaining session with the district. And additionally, I've had the pleasure of already sitting down with our new superintendent, and I think it's wonderful that she's visited every site on her first day and has already begun returning to each site to meet with teachers and staff. I'm really excited by how quickly Superintendent E. Turey is jumping in and making it a priority to get to know her employees. Thank you. I, along with our executive board members Denise Tranfalia, Jennifer Gannalas, and Megan Cochrane, our bargaining team, Janie Mason, Kim Steiner, Craig Stone, and Emily King, as well as several committee chairs and our site representatives from twelve school sites, represent over three hundred and thirty talented teachers, counselors, psychologists, nurses, and speech-language pathologists who are dedicated to the students and families in this district. Ripsia's leadership is engaged with our members' experiences, needs, and concerns. It is our duty to represent and negotiate on behalf of our members, but be assured that at the heart of all of our actions is what is best for our students. As educators, we understand the challenges faced in providing a quality education in today's complex and ever-changing world. We are committed to working collaboratively with district leadership and board members to address these issues and provide a safe and supportive learning environment for our students, as well as the best education possible. We look forward to working together, sharing ideas, and achieving our shared goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. There is no CSEA or SEIE report tonight. Receipt of official correspondence, GASB 7475, actual evaluation of the district's retiree health plan insurance program as of June 30th, 2023.
So, we decided to do something new and put this report under this heading this time. It's really a compliance report that our auditors use for our financial statements and whatnot, but if there are any, I've had, I believe last year I had a speaker come, or the person who wrote this report, present, and it's just, it's kind of blah, so.
John, this is powerful reading right here.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Are there any questions about the report? Or, no, we're good? All right. Thanks, John, I appreciate it. Next is Consent Agenda, and we do have one public comment, so Lisa, you have.
Okay. Sorry, I wanted to keep the comments on the agenda separate from my report. So, I just wanted to speak to Item 8F, and I did have an opportunity to speak with Superintendent E. Turey about this yesterday, but I still wanted to bring some of my concerns to the Board about the application for exemption from the required expenditures for classroom teacher salaries. It's my understanding that the failure to meet the 55% minimum was due to a combination of one-time funding and unfilled positions, and I also understand the need to desire, or the desire to budget conservatively. However, if we weren't operating so close to the minimum, I don't think we'd be under it right now, and this is the second year in a row that it's occurred. The amount of the budget spent on salaries has been steadily declining since 2014-15 school year, when it was at its highest at 61.5% of the operating budget. This is during a time when salaries were lower, stirs and purrs were lower, health and welfare benefits were lower, and revenues were lower. So, I would like the Board and district to reflect on this and consider that money not spent on teacher salaries is money not spent on students. Thank you.
Lisa, I just wanted to, so I know that you talked to Superintendent E. Turey about it yesterday, but you did receive a response, is that correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so the public comment, well, thanks. So, the comment isn't, isn't because you don't understand what that means, it's more that you are asking that we spend the money in a different way than we've approved John, to John?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And that we look at a way, a way to do things differently in the future, so that we're not going below the line. Like, if we weren't so close, we wouldn't, like, when something like this happens, like, we don't fill the positions, then we wouldn't be under, because the optics are bad.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly.
Yeah, 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 no, I understand, it's just, let's do it different.
Okay, thank you. So, for Consent Agenda, we approve everything from A through W. Can I get a motion to approve Items 8, A through W? I move. Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Lisa? So, Item 9, Educational Services, Public Comment, Lisa Baumann?
I don't think I've ever been to one of these board meetings where it's gone so fast.
I'm in charge now, Lisa.
I also got to, I also spoke to the superintendent about this, and she did get back to me, and I also just wanted to add some of the stuff that I, some of the feedback that I received from teachers, and that we're kind of all over the place in terms of whether or not teachers felt like they were even asked about the sufficiency of materials, and I've gotten lots of stuff back from teachers saying that they don't have what they need. And so, I would just encourage you to maybe take a little bit more time before you approve this, or when we hear from Dr. Fields, maybe he'll have the answers to these questions. But I know that I got at least twenty responses this morning, you know, right away, saying that, you know, they can't find things, or things didn't get ordered, or, you know, they don't have what they need, and that's, that's all I wanted to bring to your attention.
Great, thank you.
And I'm happy to share what I found out with you afterwards.
Okay, great. So, Item A is a public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments of the public regarding the purpose of determining the sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials in the following subject area: mathematics, history, social science, and reading language arts. The floor is now still open for public comment. Is there any other public comment? All right. Assistant Superintendent Jamal Fields will now present Item 9B, Resolution 2024-6 Determining Sufficiency of Instructional Materials. Dr. Fields?
Thank you. The Board Resolution, it's my recommendation that the Board adopt Resolution 2024-6 Determining Sufficiency of Instructional Materials. It is, we have, we have a process in place to solicit from teachers their needs. In May and June, we ask folks for any needs that they have, and then we try and anticipate, based on enrollment, the needs we'll have for the following year, and then we order those materials. In the fall, we also ask again to make sure that new folks get those materials that they need. There, we are in the process this year of adopting and trying a new process to streamline the situation so that we know from the district office perspective what all the orders are and what things are needed, and we hope to resolve any of the concerns that were brought up earlier. The resolution, would you like me to read it?
You don't have to read the whole thing. We've all read it.
Thank you.
So, I do have a question. Sufficient can mean a lot of things, so what I think is sufficient, Mark, or Left, or someone else, may have a different definition, too. So, what, when I, if I vote yes, that we have sufficient materials, what does that word sufficient mean?
Great question. Sufficient textbooks or instructional materials means each pupil, including English learners, has a textbook or instructional materials, or both, to use in class and to take home to complete homework assignments. It does not require two sets of textbooks, one for the classroom and one for home, but one set that all students have access to.
Sorry, does it have to be physical or can it be online?
Both.
Okay, so.
It can be either.
So, we do still have a couple of materials from the new curriculum that are either coming in or still being unpacked, or possibly not in a teacher's classroom?
Very few items, but yes, there are a few things. Some things got ordered a little late and are there. If you come to my office right now, we have some boxes in front of them that we're trying to get out to classes as soon as possible.
But the teachers have materials to teach in the classroom, just not maybe the physical book that they were expecting on the first day of school?
Yes, that's right.
Any other questions or discussion about this? Yeah, I have a question. So, like with the new math books, they can take those home, too? The new math books we ordered?
So, we have, either we've ordered enough for them to have a classroom set, and then the materials are online and available for students, or they have one that they can take home for that.
Okay, thank you. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's up to each teacher's discretion if they want to let students take a second book home, or how they want that to work. So, it's not every student in the district has one to stay at school and one to go home. So, it's how that teacher chooses to use their materials.
And generally, it's a set for the classroom and an opportunity for the kids to take the other ones home.
Any other questions or concerns?
I know my daughter doesn't have a textbook to bring home for her math class, and she brings home, like, the photocopied stuff from it, so, thank you for the clarification there.
Okay. So, we will now close the public hearing, unless there's any other comments. Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve 9B, Resolution 2024-6 Determining Sufficiency of Instructional Materials? Anyone?
Do you have any questions or a motion?
We're motioning.
A motion. I move that we approve Resolution 2024-6 Determining Sufficiency of Instructional Materials.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call? Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Nelson?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Item 10, Personnel Services. There is no public comment for that. What do I do with that? There we go. 10A, Ratification of Temporary Substitute Salary Schedule.
I may have. Is Jen here? Okay, she, she's my backup in case I don't have all the, so, this was, last year, we, I think it was last year, increased the daily rate for substitute teachers, and this is asking to continue that, so that, for the coming year.
No, you're good. No, you're fine. We heard. So, we're, no, we're good. We're just talking about the temporary substitute salary schedule.
Just wanted to know you were close, in case I didn't know something. Thank you.
Is there any questions or discussion? Can I get a motion to approve 10A, Ratification of a Temporary Substitute Teacher Salary Schedule? I move. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 10B, Ratification of Account Clerk MOU Between CRPU SD and CSEA Chapter 645.
Okay, that's me again. So, we've had some changes in the front office, and this is an attempt to support the front office and to increase the ASB bookkeeper from, I think it was a six-hour position to an eight-hour position. Or actually, it's creating a new position. Thank you. It's creating a new position of bookkeeper. Is that right? Thank you. To make sure that there's, there has been some turnover in the office, and there's additional support that's needed, so.
That's here at the ranch.
Yes.
To be specific.
I'm sorry, did I miss that? Thank you.
You're doing good.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? Can I get a motion to approve 10B, Ratification of Account Clerk MOU Between CRPU SD and CSEA Chapter 645?
I'll move to approve 10B.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 10C, Approval of Account Clerk Job Description.
And this is the job description to go along with the account clerk.
Great. Any questions or discussion?
List of duties.
Can I get a motion to approve 10C, Approval of Account Clerk Job Description?
I'll move that we approve 10C.
A second? I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 10D, Approval of CSEA Salary Schedule Revision.
And this is placing the account clerk on range 18 on the salary schedule.
Questions or discussion? All right. Can I get a motion to approve 10D, Approval of CSEA Salary Schedule Revision?
I'll move to approve 10D.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. There is no business in operations services, moving to Item 12, Board Services, Fiscal Update and Planning. John?
I have my first enrollment update, so as of August 31st, we have a total, we had a total of 6,161 students. When you compare that to May, May of last school year, that's 148 additional kids. I don't have an, you know, an exit and enter and exit report at this point. That'll start next month, but this is kind of the start of the year for us, so, it's all good.
Is this our first year with TK? No?
First year with, every year, the requirement goes like down a month or two, right? Yeah. So, this year, there's even younger, more kids were eligible for TK this year than there was last year.
As long as they turn five by February of the year. We did add an additional class this, you know, UELF has, is the first time they've had a TK class, and we had an additional class among of us, so they have two.
Great. Can you either have, send it to Dr. E. Turey for a board update or for next week? How many students we have in CRPU SD that are going outside of our district to a different school?
Sure.
Thanks. Any other questions for John at the moment?
Question, TK counts in ADA, or it counts when they go to Kinder?
Nope, they count.
They count, okay. I thought there was a time when they didn't count, so they've changed that.
It used to be that we had an ETK.
Oh, yeah, that's what it is.
ETK population, which is, they were before the age that.
Right, thank you. I knew the. I knew there was something there. Okay.
Great.
The other, other item on that, that item, excuse me, is the, kind of the monthly update to the, to the budget, and if there are any questions, I'm glad to answer them, but I won't speak to it tonight.
Just keep reporting more attendance every month.
Sounds good. Thank you.
We'd like attendance increases.
Good. All right. Item twelve B Public Hearing on Twenty Twenty Three Dash Twenty Twenty Four Excess Reserves. Lisa, you can start making your way up. I have something I have to read first. All right. Item twelve B will be a public hearing to solicit the recommendation and comments of the public regarding the Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Twenty Four District Budget, which includes information regarding combined, assigned, and unassigned ending fund balances above the minimum recommended reserve for economic uncertainties. The floor is now open for public comment. Lisa Baumann.
Thank you. So we're very concerned by this, and also when you put it together with the other item that I spoke on about the being under the fifty-five percent, we're really concerned. And particularly because over the last several years, the reserve has been going up and up and up. We've been under projecting revenues by, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty million dollars, and every time that happens, it goes into the reserves. And I, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think in, once our contract ends, that anything has been added to salaries above step and column. And so when, for example, this past year, we under projected revenues by nineteen million dollars. Seven of, only seven of that was unrestricted, but that one hundred, one point five million, sorry, of that went to some technology upgrades, and the rest went to reserves, five point five million. We're almost at ten. And when we as RIPSIA take a look at, you know, the, what's happening historically, that the reserves are going up and spending on teachers is going down, and it's not getting any less expensive to pay rent or buy groceries, we're really concerned that, about you approving this to continue to go up. And again, I would just like to hope that we can find a different way of doing things where teachers are not worried about how they're going to pay their rent and that we're not losing teachers to neighboring districts, which my friend Anna Lehman, who got up here, you know, a year and a half ago, you know, from Stanford, left here after the strike and went to Marin, and she's making as much as I am as a five-year teacher, and I'm a twenty-four-year teacher. And I know that we lost other ones last year too, and so I just, I'm, I'm concerned, I know that, that there are uncertainties, I understand what a reserve is for, and that you don't think that three percent is enough, but I think that nine point three percent is way too much. And I speak for my members. Thank you.
Thank you. John, I just had one clarifying question. When you present the budget to us a couple of months ago, you, I, I'm going to say this wrong, and you can correct me. So in the budget, we have step and column, and then below the budget, you put a line in there, and I believe is at two percent for increasing salaries or some percent for increasing salaries to show us.
Cola for, the projected cola for next year.
Okay, so it is, it's not in the approved budget, it's in like the footnotes of, and then this is what it would be going forward, so. So we do have it on the paper.
Correct.
We are planning for it.
Yeah, I mean, the best we can.
And then is there some one-time money in, like, is the one-time money kind of skewing everything a little weird?
I'm glad, I'll be presenting, when I, when I talk about the unaudited actuals, and, and regarding this particular item, you're not, you're not approving anything.
We don't have to approve anything tonight, right?
Right. And I apologize because this was supposed to be part of the budget adoption package during that public hearing, and we missed it. So it's not too late because we actually have till the fifteenth of September to, to have this process happen, which is happening, and I appreciate it, and I really apologize for that.
No, it's okay.
But, yeah, I'm going to talk about, I'll save my talk.
No, that's fine. And then just so the board knows, this isn't actually something that we approve. We do a hearing, and the public has time to come and discuss it, and then it's actually something the Sonoma County Office of Education approves. So it's part of our whole budget package that John will send up there that's due in September, so.
So I, I have a question. Is, is the, the concern about the Form seventeen special budget part, portion of the funds?
The combination of what the ending balance is in our unrestricted Fund O One budget, and the Fund seventeen makes up our reserve.
Correct.
And I'll just say it now that, you know, we are allowed to, to have in reserves ten, up to ten percent of our budget, and we are, you know, maintaining that, and that, you know, there, there's a slide in my presentation that shows the average unified school district in the state of California has over twenty percent of budget, of, of reserves, and, you know, yes, our reserves have gone up recently, but, I mean, I think it's, it's our only protection against, you know, economic downfall, downfalls.
All right. If there's no other public comment, we will close the hearing on the Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Twenty Four Excess Reserves. Item eleven C Approval of the Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Unaudited Actual Financial Report.
Oh, yeah, I'll talk to my assistant about that.
Pink is cheaper.
Yeah, I think that's what I heard. All right, I'll try to make this quick.
Goodbye.
Yes. Good evening, Board and community. My name is John Bartolome, I'll be presenting the unaudited actuals, the twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuals for our district. What are they? You know, we've, we've prepared year-end financial statements as of June thirtieth for all, all the district funds. The auditors will conduct their final phase of the audit in October. A draft copy of the audit will be available in December, and the final audit report will be presented to the Board in January of twenty twenty-four. What's changed since June, which at, at the budget adoption report, you know, there's a section of that report that shows what we are estimating our actuals to be for the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, but, but at this point, the books have been closed. For you cunning nerds out there, this is, this is fun stuff. Year-end closing entries are prepared and posted. Revenues received that was not anticipated. Expenditure allocations or budgets were, were not completely used or overspent. Okay, so kind of my common slides. As far as revenues go, the unrestricted revenues equaled just under seventy-two million dollars. We had a combined revenue, which is our general fund revenues of just under a hundred million. This is what it looks like graphically, and, you know, the obvious, the overwhelming majority of the revenues coming from the local control funding formula. We had just about fifty-six million dollars in unrestricted expenditures and ninety-point two million dollars of expenditures. And just, just keep it in your head that, you know, ten percent of ninety million is nine million dollars, and, and that's what we are allowed to have in reserves, and I'll get more to that in a minute. Unrestricted general fund expenditures. Eighty-four percent of the district's unrestricted general fund budget went to employee costs. And, you know, I don't, I don't break this out here, but a big part of the five thousands, which is the other services and operations, you know, when we can't find, or when we can't fill positions, especially in special ed for that matter, we, we have to go out to agencies to, to fill those positions or help us fill those positions, so instead of those employee costs coming out of the, the regular one, one through three thousand object codes, you know, they're in the fives, so maybe I'll break that out one of these days. So seventy-six percent of the district's budget, total general fund of the ninety million that we're talking about is going towards people costs.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
So of that, oh, sorry, that's why it's not working. Of the seventy-six of the district's general fund budget, the general fund budget right now includes one-time money.
Yep.
Right? Am I jumping ahead?
Uh, no, I can answer this question.
So if we took out that one-time money because of COVID, and you don't have to know this off the top of your head, but what would that seventy-six number be?
Oh, yeah, right. I didn't do that math, but I do know how much of the, so of the ninety million dollars, I was going to talk about this in, when I talked about CA if you really wanted me to, but of the ninety million dollars, five point five million of that money was one-time.
All right.
So if you take, if you take them, if you do the math and take, we would, we would have passed the CEA for sure if we didn't have the five point five million dollars. It would be, the denominator would have been eighty-five million.
Yep. Thank you.
John, going back to your accounting coding, so what you're saying is our employees are under the one thousand to three thousand accounts?
Yeah.
And since they're contractors or they're, what's the word? Consultants that we can't.
Not consultants.
We don't, but we don't classify them as employees so that they hit as expenses rather than, okay.
Right. Right. Not consultants, let's not talk about, I'm talking about people that are actually in our classrooms.
Contractors, people that work for us that we haven't directly hired that are not employees.
Correct. Thank you. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on this because this is the change in fund balance since June, so we are projecting to have a, a little bit of a surplus of four hundred thousand dollars as of, in June. You know, we, we did get a little bit more revenue than we projected in LCFF ninety-two thousand, that was, that had to do with our annual ADA, some of our, some of our local control funding formula is based on annual ADA, and we don't know that until after the year's over, pretty much. Other state revenue, we received about a hundred forty-two thousand dollars more in lottery funding, which is awesome, and it makes sense because there were some big pots that you could win, and that made people buy more lottery tickets. And other local revenue increases were interest income, it's about a hundred forty-five thousand. We got a, a one-time return of equity from our workers' comp provider, RZA, that wasn't planned at all. I thought, I actually thought that would come in this year, but it was a hundred seventy-six And there's some other little things, but that make up the five hundred thousand, but those are the big amounts. And then expenditure changes, so when it's a positive number, like under the certificated salaries, that wasn't, and we, we spent more than what we budgeted, so a hundred thirty-five thousand went to certificate salaries, and that was mostly substitute, substitute pay for teachers. Classified salaries and benefits, you know, that's, that's a pretty good number. We were only off two thousand dollars in each one of those categories. We over, we spent a little bit more in supplies, and it had to do with custodial and MNO supplies. We were off a little bit in the utilities, a hundred fourteen thousand, which, which I was pretty happy about, actually. I was really worried that that was going to go the other way. Indirect costs are the costs we can charge to the restricted side of the budget for the, for the administration of those funds or those, those resources, and we were able to collect a little bit more than what I projected, and then, this'll show up a little better in the next slide, but, you know, we, we needed, we wanted to reserve another three hundred thousand dollars basically for curriculum adoption, so I transferred an additional three hundred thousand dollars from the unrestricted budget to the restricted budget to kind of save that money. And then, this is just a transfer of our reserve, but in our Fund seventeen, which was a question earlier from Trustee Nelson, it's my understanding that this board at some point wants to keep four percent of our budget in Fund seventeen, so this seven-hundred-fifty-five-thousand-dollar transfer is, makes, makes four percent in Fund seventeen. Any questions on that? So after all that, on the unrestricted side of the budget, we had a, a little bit of a surplus of three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. That's pretty good. It's better than the other way. So again, this is, this is kind of the breakdown of the, of the general fund and the, and the reserves, so you can see total revenues and expenditures. We always have that contribution to restricted maintenance and special ed, that was fourteen million. I'm showing the, the transfer for the curriculum adoption of three hundred thousand and the transfer to Fund seventeen, so that, that gives us just under seven million dollars that we had in ending fund balance for the unrestricted budget. And to keep us, you know, one thing we talked about throughout the year was we need some money for this big infrastructure technology project that we're going to start next year. So I'm committing one point five million dollars of our unrestricted fund balance for that project, and that keeps us at the ten percent. If you add five point four million and three point six million, we get to about nine million dollars, which is ten percent of our budget. And that's, again, what we're allowed to have at this point, so. I threw this in, as I said earlier, twenty-one, twenty-two, most unified school districts similar to us have a lot more money to deal with than we do in reserves. Twenty-two is the average percentage of reserves.
John, it's Fund seventeen that we can't have more than twelve percent in, right? Or is it total?
It's a total.
Okay.
You know, we, we can only count as part of our reserves, as part of this ten percent reserve that we can hold, the unrestricted ending balance plus Fund seventeen.
Okay.
All right. So this is just a little bit more about what I just said. The actual ending balance is nineteen point eight million, like, like was, was said, but seven, seven million of it is unrestricted, and I just went over all of that. Twelve point eight million, almost thirteen million dollars is restricted. So that doesn't count, one, that doesn't count in our reserve calculation, and two, that represents all of the restricted resources that we have received money for, and, you know, there are some big numbers here, like expanded learning opportunities program has two million dollars of ending balance, excuse me. I don't have any water here. The Arts and Music Block Grant and Learning Recovery Block Grant makes. The arts and music block grant and, uh, learning recovery block grant makes up about seven million dollars, and that's, you know, that's the majority of this ending balance. And in the first couple pages of your, uh, of the report, if you wanna see by resource what, what the ending balance is that makes up this eight, this twelve million dollars, I, it's a pretty big spreadsheet, so I didn't, I didn't put it on here.
Thank you.
Any questions about that? Great. So an increase in funding, ending fund balance, which in this case isn't, wasn't that much, is definitely, is still good news. It's important to remember fiscal solvency is based on a three-year projection. The fund balance is our first line of defense to weather any uncertain future state budget downfalls, so. And just for fun, I, uh, you know, this is, this is kind of the, each report, s, um, restrict, unrestricted and restricted, uh, revenue and, um, expenditure changes by report. And you can see, you know, on the unrestricted side, revenues were pretty consistent after, you know, starting in October. And then, you know, the expenditures kind of increased as the, as we had more money to spend, so. And as I said, uh, these are the ending balances, beginning and ending balances for all the funds that we, uh, have in the district. Cafeteria fund, our food service department killed it again this year. I mean, it's amazing how many food, I mean, I wish she was here, and I'm gonna have her present to you one of these days, but they're serving, you know, record amounts of meals and, um, and they're free meals to everyone, and we increased the ending balance in that program, uh, half a million, almost more than, a little more than half a million dollars. And there was, there was a time, uh, my first year here, actually, we were making contribution from the general fund budget to Fund Thirteen to, um, you know, make their program whole. So this is, it's amazing. You could see Fund Seventeen, again, that's our, that's our four percent reserve now. We have a little bit of bond funds left. Fund twenty-five is our, uh, what's the fee that, developer fee balance, thank you, Lord. And then, any other que, any questions about that? I had some slides around CEA, I don't know if we need to talk about it anymore, but, um, you know, I, I think I've talked quite a bit about it, but the numerator of the, of the formula is, is only the salaries and benefits of classroom teachers and, um, instructional aides. It's not the support staff like counselors, nurses, um, speech and patho, you know, speech, speech and language pathologists. It's just, uh, it's just that, it's just that, tho, that cost over our total budget. So as I said earlier, if, if we either filled all the positions that we have that remained unfilled throughout the year and, um, took away from the denominator some of the one-time expenditures, you know, we would've passed easily like we have in the past, but, you know, we're, 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 we're in an interesting time because we have quite a bit of money. It's all, it's all restricted, the thirteen million, eight, twelve point eight million dollars is restricted dollars, um, but that's just how it goes. So, and this slide shows, uh, historically how, uh, all the different kinds of districts are having trouble passing this, um, form, CEA, classroom expenditures analysis. And this is just, uh, this is what wasn't included in the packet that I didn't have and I didn't get till yesterday, the comparative analysis of, um, you know, our total compensation against similar districts in our, in a, you know, twenty-five to fifty-mile radius.
Can you email us this slide?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna post. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. If you're gonna post it, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'll get it there.
And this just talks about the reserve cap, you know, we, we, we are allowed, um, education code limits school districts' reserves to ten percent, which we're, we're at, and, um, you know, if, if we would've had a problem, this is some ways to solve it, so. I didn't know where to put that in the presentation exactly, but I wanted to have it, just in case I throw in a question.
I have a question. Um, John, so this is kind of all new to me, but so the state regulates how much of our budget goes to our teachers?
It's not a regulation, it's really just an analysis of, and it's a, um, let me go back to it. I don't wanna misspeak. Yeah, the, the calculation is a legal requirement used to determine the percentage of expenditures for direct classroom cost of teaching students. And that's ed code, obviously, that you see there, and it's, it goes back, I mean, it's, I don't wanna add any commentary to it, but it's an, it's an old ed code that, that goes way back, that, you know, it's, it's really outdated, especially now because we have a bunch of one-time money that has been, been fluxed into, into districts and like, you know, like, as I showed you the next slide, been having a lot of people, a lot of districts are having trouble passing this, um, analysis, if you will.
So California needs to redo that code.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for John about the unaudited?
I was just curious, uh, when it comes to the reserve, other districts are having more than ten percent, how, how are they able to do that?
So, uh, just like, just like what I did or what we are doing, um, some, these are the, these are the ideas that, um, are out there, you know, you commit, you commit a part of the balance for, for a big project like technology, um, textbook adoptions, you know, we're taking advantage of all those things. Pension obligations is another thing that some districts, uh, like my previous, uh, couple districts have, had a separate fund for future pension obligations, um, you know, and that number is big, you know, you have a whole report on what that, what that could be if everyone decided to retire at the same time, which, which would never happen. So it, it becomes, you know, it becomes these ideas flushed out, you know, we, we're, we're pretty close.
So that ten percent is more of a recommendation?
It's, yeah, I mean, it's, by ed code, it's a, it's a, it's a requirement, but if you're, if you put any of that, if you commit any of that ending balance to any one of these things, I mean, you, you kind of, so, you know, suffice the, the code.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for John? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Twelve C, can I get a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, no, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three unaudited actual financial report?
I'll move that we approve, twelve C.
Can I get a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Do you guys wanna take a break or pause?
Break, please.
All right. We will be taking a five-minute break, we will come back at seven twenty-eight.
So this is just a discussion item tonight. You don't need to approve it. But next, um, next month, it will, you'll see these, um, you'll see this again, and that will be the time to, that the board will hopefully vote to approve. But now it's just a discussion item.
Does anyone have any questions about it? So will we be going to all three, um, union partners and asking to participate in interest-based bargaining this year? Or where, I know we had the study session about it and the training. Where are we with that?
Yeah, I'm happy to give an update on that. So, um, I've been working closely with Lisa Baumann and also with John Gekk and Bryna Wigmore, um, to, to explore some options regarding interest-based bargaining. We have, um, been invited by Chico Unified to go up and observe one of their bargaining sessions. And we're hoping to do that sometime in the month of October. And so we would have, um, Ripsia bargaining team, some members from CSEA and SEIU. And we just kind of want to see what it looks like. We had a really, as Lisa was mentioning, we had a really productive session, um, last week when we were doing some MOU negotiations, working together really well. We drafted some language together, which was great. Um, so I, you know, but we, we do want to see, see what it looks like in another district. And then, um, af- after that point, we would engage in the training, um, which I believe is an eight-hour training. So we're, we're hopefully moving in that direction of just at least seeing if this is something that, um, we're all interested in participating in. So, but I still wanted to get it, you know, get it ready. So when we're, once we've done that, we can just get going. Ideally, you know, we're, we're starting, we have this wrapped up by June 30th. And so we can start the year, next year, and be in contract instead of being out of contract.
Great. Any other questions? And then just for a clarification, so we are submitting our sunshine to Ripsia.
Correct.
And then they, in the next board meeting, we approve it. And then they would come back and say, yes, these 11 items are good for us, or they can counter?
They, they'll do their own as well. They'll submit their own proposal, um, also. And it will probably have a lot of the same articles that we are wanting to discuss, and they may have some different ones, too.
Okay. And then before negotiations actually take place, both sides agree on which articles will be discussed?
Yes.
And then once negotiations start, let's say no one brought up Article III. We can't just halfway through all of a sudden saying, now I want to talk about Article III.
Right.
That would start all over.
So any ones that we say we want to talk about, and any ones that Ripsia says they want to talk about, we have to talk about. But if not, if neither of us say we want to talk about Article 13, then we can't do that.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. And then, um, oh, I don't know if you want to introduce?
Well, so next we have the, any other questions for the Ripsia sunshine? Nope. Proposal to negotiate the successor to the 2021-2024 contract with California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 645.
So this is the same, um, but it's with our union, CSEA, which is one of our classified unions. It's our custodians, uh, maintenance staff, office staff, um, our cafeteria assistants. They're all in CSEA. So same, same exact thing. We brought, um, I believe, s- five articles that we want to discuss with them. And it will follow the same process.
Great. Any other questions for that? 12F, proposal to negotiate the successor to the 2021-2024 contract with Service Employees International Union, SEIO. SEIU, sorry. Local 1021.
Yes. So this is, um, our proposal to sunshine with SEIU. And SEIU are our paraprofessionals, campus supervisors, English learner, um, assistants. And same thing, I believe we brought six articles that we want to discuss in their upcoming three-year contract. Any questions? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 12G. Resolution 2024-5, authorization for Maite E. Turi, Marcus Jamal Fields, John Bartolome, Molly Kohler, Rachel Allen, Matthew Marshall, Josh Savage, and Jennifer Hansen to sign on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Any questions or discussion? Can I get a motion to approve 12G?
I move.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Nelson?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
12H, resolution 2024-7, recognizing October 8, 2023 through October 14, 2023, as week of the school administrator. It's okay.
So we, this is a resolution. Thank you. All of a sudden I got nervous. I was good in the beginning, and now I'm not. Okay. So, uh, this is a resolution. We have week of the teacher, we have week of the educator. This is week of the administrator, and we'd like to pass a resolution acknowledging the hard work of all our administrators in our district.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2024-7, recognizing October 8, 2023 through October 14, 2023, as week of the school administrator?
Move that we approve 12H.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Nelson?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
12I, resolution 2024-1, adopting the actual GAN limit for the 2023, oh, 2022-2023 fiscal year and the projected GAN limit for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
So we're required to adopt the annual GAN limit resolution for determining our appropriations limit and the revenue subject to this limit. Calculations are attached, and the district does not have revenue in excess of the appropriations limit.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve 12I, resolution 2024-1?
I'll move that we approve 12A, 12I.
Can I get a second?
I second. Roll call.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Nelson?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Are there any, so now we're going into our, uh, board policies and administration regulations. Are there any questions for 12J through L, the first readings? All right. 12J, first reading of BP 5117 inter-district attendance. 12K, first reading of BP 5141-5 mental health. 12L, first reading of BPAR 5141.6 school health services. 12M, first reading and wave second reading of BP Exhibit 4119.21 professional services. Can I get a motion to approve 12M?
Professional standards.
Oh, professional standards. What did I say?
Services.
Services, sorry. Can I get a motion to approve 12M?
I'll move that we approve 12M.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Is there any questions or discussions for Items 12N through X? All right. Here we go. I make a motion to approve 12N, second reading of board policy and Exhibit 0420.41 charter school oversight. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 12N. I make a motion to approve 12O, second reading of board policy administrative regulation 4112.2 certification. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 12P, second reading of Exhibit 4112.9, 4212.9, 4312.9, employee notifications. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 12Q, second reading of board policy, oh, I make a motion to approve 12Q. Second reading of board policy 4140, 4240, 4340 bargaining units. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I make a motion to approve 12R, second reading of administrative regulation 4161.1, 4361.1, 4261.1, personal illness injury leave. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I make a motion to approve 12S, second reading of administrative regulation 4161.2, 4261.2, 4361.2, personnel leaves. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 12T, I make a motion to approve the second reading of administrative regulation 4161.8, 4261.8, 4361.8, family care and medical leave. Can I get a second?
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I make a motion to approve 12U, second reading of board policy 6146.4, differential graduation incompetency standards for students with disabilities. Can I get a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I make a motion to approve 12V, second reading of board policy 6159.2, non-public, non-secretary in school and agency services for special education. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Motion carry, or, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 12W, I make a motion to approve the second reading of board policy 6173.4, education for American Indian students. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 12X, I make a motion to approve the second reading of board policy and administrative regulation 6174, education for English learners. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. 12Y.
Run out of letters.
I, I know, that's it. We can only do a couple more.
You got,
We got one more.
X1, X2, X3.
AA, AB, I don't know. Let's not learn. Let's just stop there. All right. Uh, acceptance of gifts and donations to school and district.
Thank you. So we are lucky to benefit from our generous community. And, uh, Starbucks donated $120 worth of coffee. I believe that was for the kickoff that took place at the beginning of the year. And that was to the district, to Rancho Cattati, uh, Target gift cards, equalling fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. To Rancho Cattati, 50 backpacks and supplies from Rebecca Johnson. Oh, I also want to mention that Rick Warner was the Target gift cards. Rebecca Johnson donated $1,000 in backpacks and supplies. There's monetary support from Etcha and the Spanish Club field trips from the Conning Foundation of $2,500. Also to Rancho Cattati. To Rancho Cattati, uh, monetary JV and Vartiti football transportation from Whirler, Whirly Enterprises for $4,851.93. And then another football donation from Nebe Brothers Associates for $3,500. And the total was $13,421.93.
Wonderful.
Yes. Thank you to all our community, uh, supporters. Very generous. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the acceptance of gifts and donations to schools and district?
I always motion that we accept gifts and donations to the district. In this case, uh, 12, 12Y.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Woo!
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Future business and agenda items. Trustee Johnson?
Nope. You say no. I have nothing.
Okay. Martin?
Pass.
Brown?
We, we've talked about in the past about solar and that, and I sent an email off to, to John. So just going forward on that, you know, to carry that forward. And then, um, two, going forward, we had discussions about safety and, and whether we only have one, what do we call it?
Resource officer.
Resource officer. So, um, just to keep that discussion going, too.
Yes.
You know, you know, what's the feasibility of a second resource officer?
I believe, and you have a meeting coming up with the chief of public safety. What are they called here if they're not a chief of police?
Public safety.
Chief of public safety, yeah. Okay, great.
I think it's this week.
Great. Wonderful. All right.
No, I was also gonna ask about the resource officer program.
Great. Um, so I just want to say congratulations to Superintendent I. Turi. You made it through your first board meeting. You did fantastic. And we will adjourn the meeting at 7:49.